Welcome everybody to the afternoon session of the Winchester City Council Planning Committee. This is taking place in the Walton Street, Warrington, Winchester Field. I'm Councillor Jay Rutter, and the Vice Chair of this committee in the absence of the Chair of the Council. Can I just remind everybody that all parts of the meeting are audio recorded and live streamed from the council's website. In addition, that video recording of the meeting will be uploaded to the council's YouTube channel after the meeting. Can I remind members to speak clearly and remain as usual on microphone? And finally, can I please ask everyone to ensure that your mobile phones and any other electronic devices are not silent or switched off entirely? Thank you very much. We now move into the afternoon session of today's meeting. Item number 11, which looks at the land centre school lane in Denmead, here in Salford and New York. And the presenter is Rose List, Row 10. Here we have the red line plan. The edge at the moment is shown from the hilltop. And there is a public waterway footpath that runs along this boundary here. You can see the water. Here we have an aerial view of the site. You can see one dwelling that is adjacent to the site here before the rest of the settlement is seen here. And here is an indicative layout of the site. It shows that five dwellings can be accommodated with access and landscaping. Here we have some of the illustrative finishes and designs. The proposal, none of these are eligible to be conditioned as they are registered. Moving on to some photos of the site. You can see at the top there is a view of the existing access into the site. In background, you can see a significant amount of tree, perhaps a few. This is taken just inside a fence. As you can see, that's here the oak tree on my site. There is an area just up here where butcher beans have been sold. Just forward in that, this is what the butcher beans are sold here. And we've got some rural beans sold on site at the present. Although this is a lot of oak tree. And here at the top is a view looking north from the edge of the site towards the road, which you just seen in the distance here. And at the bottom here, it's from within the site looking towards the neighbour's boundary in the oak tree here. The recommendation is to refuse. Thank you very much, Mrs. King. We now go on to comments speaking. And first, we have the parish council representative Paula Langford-Smith. Is Paula here?
Hi.
Hello, thank you.
Do you have three minutes?
Yes, thank you very much. Parish council request for this application is refused as it is contrary to policies NTR-2 and/or local plan part one. The bottom line, whether the proposed dwellings are to be situated outside of the settlement boundary and that identifies in the main Denmead neighbourhood plan. The further allocation penalty as required by the Winchester District Local Plan is to be located within the village and therefore there is no need for any additional dwellings in the countryside. The principle of development is not acceptable and the application does not provide adequate justification of the development of residential property on the application site. In relation to the infill policy in NTR-3, the proposal does not meet the requirements of the policy because Denmead is not a rural settlement where it has been agreed to implement the infill policy. These type of applications need to change the rural aspect of the fringe of the village. And we have representations from people who own the next field along just this Wednesday, and they wish to do the same. This is contrary to policy NTR-2, which seeks to conserve the settlement's identity in countryside setting. In terms of private matting, it is considered that in combination, the creation of five domestic dwellings and the associated paraphernalia in this countryside location would be harmful to the visual immunity of the area and therefore is contrary to policy NTR-4. Developers should not cause harm to the character and landscape of an area or neighbouring uses or create inappropriate noise, light and traffic generation that will also be significant impact on the ecology and therefore harm to the character and landscape. The being that Denmead are voted where the application allows it to be built by the name of the plan, it did not include this area designated countryside. To me, Denmead has more than met our target for development. Aside from the allocations in the neighbourhood plan, which was 250, there have been a further 26 dwellings given planning permission and applications for a further 24 are currently being considered. Five of these are in our 24. In addition to this, there have been 50 new dwellings created through business residential permission, but a further 48 undergoing conversion currently. That's 124 new dwellings on top of the 250 that we were allocated. There is no operational need for the dwellings. It is not an exception site and will not provide any affordable dwellings. It is not in a sustainable location, being almost two kilometres from the village centre. Moreover, it is in the countryside and there are both robust and reasonable reasons for refusal. Thank you very much, Councillor.
Thank you very much, Paula. I think you're sticking well within your three minutes. Members, do you have any questions and clarifications about parish council requests? Yes, the answer is.
Thank you for your submission. In the written representation, we have Denmead Parish Council objecting for the reason that these are not truly self-built blocks. And I know you didn't mention that in your speech, but I wondered if you could say a little bit more about that objection on parish council.
Well, the applicant has applied for five houses and clearly this one applicant is not multiple applicants and therefore we did consider that five dwellings are required for one family.
Any further questions, members? No, thank you very much indeed, Mrs. King. And now we move on to the supporter, Amy Hopkins, AV nine. Lovely, you have three minutes, you know, to press the buttons. We're going to talk a bit on there and you can start when you're ready. Thank you.
Good afternoon, and thank you all for being here today. My husband Derek and I are very passionate about self-building and we'd love to not only have the opportunity to build our own forever home, but also give four families the same opportunity. We propose to do this by way of a self-build community group. We are not builders, though we are not already hired builders, which is what Denmead Parish stated in their objection, for everyone else to believe was true. We have created a document, which I remount yourselves, explaining in detail how this self-build group would work. I do have a few copies here if you did not receive this, but just to pick up a few of the points. The first being that the chosen self-builders would have to be under Winchester self-build register. In doing this, we are not only ensuring that the families are serious about self-build, but we will also be helping Winchester council targets for approved and self-build applications. Secondly, we'll be carrying out power affecting and giving financial checks to confirm that the finances are in place to fund a completed build for the proposed timescales. The still exception means the three-year occupancy is needed to avoid having to contribute to this levy. This will deter individuals and developers from coming in and making a quick buck. A major factor of this application is we look to offer our site to Winchester council as a pilot scheme. They could use our site for other self-builders to visit and learn from and hopefully make similar sites more readily available in the future. We recently visited a similar site in Bristol, which is run by another self-build group. We learnt a lot from this visit and are extremely impressed with the support the group received from South Walton Street Council. They have championed this site and they're also using it in a case like this for others. We would love for Winchester council to do the same. We do realise we're 90 metres outside of the settlement boundary, but we do feel our project warrants an exception to this. This is a pioneering project and by approving our application, you would be taking five people off the Winchester self-build register, which currently has a staggering 303 people waiting to build their own homes. Section 52 of the National Planning Policy states, where there are no policies and/or LPA's are not meeting their duty in relation to the provision of custom self-build plots, the fact of an application delivering custom self-build plots should be given significant weight in the planning balance. Figures from the Right to Build Register between 2018/2019 show that Winchester council only approved four custom self-build applications failing to meet their obligations under the Right to Build Act. I'd love to talk to you more about the eco side of the project and how energy efficient the self-builds are, but sadly I only get three minutes. All I can do is stress that this is about approved self-build project and to my knowledge, the first of its kind of Winchester district. Thank you.
Very much, Amy. Members, do we have matters of clarification to ask? Amy, please, councillor Lee.
Good afternoon, Amy. You said from your presentation about the Denmead neighbourhood plan. Were you aware of it? Have you read it?
Yeah.
Have you knew you were planning something that is outside of the government?
No, I appreciate that. When it comes to self-builds and especially the group that we're trying to make, it's something the government are really championing at the moment. And we do feel that we could be an exception, an exception site. And others there are, obviously with extreme self-builds and everything like that, but as a self-build group, we feel it's an exception and obviously it's something the government are championing at the moment.
You do realise that the local plan is not really with?
Yes.
Or should we say, well, no. Is that site part of the slur?
That was something I apologize for. My own, our plan of a test or a fight, I would like to say sorry, but I would know the actual answer to. All I know is that the White Paper is highly for self-builds and there's strong cases in there also.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any further questions for Amy? No? Okay, thank you very much, Amy. That's the end of your contribution, but please you stay and listen to the rest of the discussion, okay? And first, do you have anything that you want to add before we go to questions? Okay, thank you. So I think it's not a hugely large report, so I think we'll take questions on the whole report if that's okay, members, from the political page ninety. So do you have any questions? Councillor Pearce.
Thank you, Jean. Yes, a question of the officer and the pastor of the Miss King, which regarding the NPPF, which is by all accounts of the documents, first, I'm looking at the annex one, which is updated originally to 2016, and updated twice since then, last October 2018, regarding self-build parcels. You've heard Mr. Hopkins mention that this is a self-build group. Now, could you tell me how this application falls down in relation to the NPPF?
Thank you. Check. Yeah, I mean, I think what we would stress and acknowledge actually is that there's no question of doubt that the government is very committed to this type of build. I think it was even in Manchester in 2019, actually, but it is in, yeah, as you rightly quote councillor, and also they have a task force that we've actually met with actually last month, I think. So it's quite a current topic, and it's most definitely something the chair is mentioned that we will be addressing through the local plan. However, it is a consideration and we know that there is commitment from the government in policy to do that and we have obligations about self-build register etcetera. And there are calculations to do in terms of meeting what we call permissible and service plots to meet that demand. Now, in the report, our editor Paddy is saying that, you know, we don't have an issue in that regard, but even if, even if there were a deficiency in meeting that demand, as you've already heard from the case office's presentation, it's something to consider and weigh in the planning balance, as you always do. But this is a site which doesn't meet in principle housing policy for the new house because it's in the number of somebody, everybody's, I don't think anybody's said anything different to that. So that's hence why the recommendation is not to support it. But I would certainly acknowledge, you know, there is clearly a desire, naturally, you know, by the government, because it has a role to play, it's a question, something that we need to pick up through our House assessment etcetera, the new local plan, but the application we're calling here is in outside the village and you have to consider all of those other usual policies you would consider alongside of that this council's self-build scheme. It doesn't override automatically all of those other important planning considerations and policies. So hopefully councillor, that gives you, gives you a round of answers. And you've still got to weigh in planning balance, but we brought in the report the reasons why the recommendation is not authentic. Thank you.
So about clarification, actually.
Yes.
I would take it from which you said to finish this, it falls down in the sense that outside the developer's basically operating premises, yes? And by implication, I'll cancel reading the sentence well. So self-build would only apply if the site is actually in the developer's boundary.
Self-build is a consideration, as I've said, but the point is, I mean, it would be something to weigh in the balance and as I say, what we've got to look at is the policies in the round. So it wouldn't override automatically other policy objections to certification. It doesn't mean to say that the MIs need that were necessarily acceptable are ones within the settlement boundary, but that would, that would certainly heavily weigh in favour of those schemes. So you'd weigh in the self-build alongside the fact that something was policy compliant in principle, etcetera, etcetera. So it is something which you can, you can consider, but obviously it's this particular site, it's a big one, where everybody that's spoken thus far is, is in the public site. It's not supported by the Denmead neighbourhood plan or the Winchester city local plan in terms of the policies that deal with new sites or houses, because it's in the public. Thank you, Jean.
Thank you, councillor. Any questions, any other questions to the officer? No, debate? Yeah, councillor Lee.
Thank you, Jean. I think Mr. Fitch has actually said, oh, this is outside of the local area of Denmead. Denmead is the only council, parish council, town council that actually went down the pathway of doing a local plan, which is incorporated in its entirety into the Winchester city local plan. So that is very important in that sense. This is countryside and it's, it is very much putting at the very edge of the parish to some degree. And I think we've got to be careful. I know the residents of Denmead already have complained quite verbally in some statistical regards or numbers that Denmead has had to provide. But of course, what's made it worse is the fact that Western Walton Hill, which is also partly Denmead, has had to provide somewhere in the region another 1,200 houses. So all in all, Denmead is putting up quite a build. I think the houses themselves, from the illustrations that have been provided, look really nice, but they're not in the right place. It's not often that I can support the officers if it comes to NTR-3 and four, but in this particular case, I think for change, it's been read correctly or interpreted correctly. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Lee. Any more? Yes, councillor Pearce.
So I want to make a note of what Mr. Councillor Lee has said. So I think the case reports actually post it all. The issue with this is not comparing to self-build, which is something the government, the NPPF, and indeed this council does favour, is the location of the site. And that is that it's not within the current development boundary. It is, as has been said previously, it is in the countryside, not just that, but it is an ultimate piece of countryside that even with landscape would make this development as attractive as these houses are. But quite frankly, I do find the houses are strong here as an example, as quite attractive houses, but they don't follow the design codes as we normally identify in Winchester. Whether there has to be a certain managing design, that's different. Basically, this sort of thing makes it slightly different. Again, the drainage system on this site, one of the photographs, it shows, showed actually it's likely quite less theatrics, which implies there is drainage issue on that site at regular times. And then he's gone from all the way. I'm afraid that's one, I favour the idea of self, self-build, very much so, and that I congratulate your group doing it, but unfortunately it just doesn't comply with our policies. And so I agree entirely with what this minister's recommending, and that is I would get, we have to turn this down.
Thank you, councillor Pearce. And yes, I'd just like to add, I think the way forward, I think we all agree that self-build is a good thing in principle, but it's the case to have the right site. And I'm afraid at the moment, this is not the right site and it breaks too many rules for us to consider. So an exception site in planning terms is a provision of a locally needed affordable housing and not, and not self-builds. So please do make representations to the cabinet member concerned about the new local plan and the role of self-builds within that. And I think that you will be pushing it at open door. And I know that lots are key to look at the role of self-build within the new local plan. And that's definitely your way forward. I'm afraid I don't detect that there's any view on this committee that we can do on the question without being recommended. Okay, there's no more contributions to debates. We will go to the decision. This application is recommended for refusal. Can I see all those in favour of the recommendation, please? That's eight unanimous, yes, all hands. Thank you very much. This application is refused. We will have a five-minute break, possible change around the office, and three minutes at fourteen twenty-seven. Thank you. Yes. Thank you very much, I appreciate that. Thank you.
I'm glad you thought of that, actually. I'm glad. I appreciate that. I appreciate that. Thank you very much. I appreciate that. Thank you. I'm glad you thought of that, actually. I'm glad. 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 I know. So you have. Yeah. Yeah. I think. I think. I was. Yeah. Uh. I'm. I'm. Honestly. Yeah. I mean. Guys, I'm. 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 I was. Last. Honest. We must. We must. I'm. Really. I'm. Yeah. It's. So. But some. We're. When you do. Out. No, no, no. Uh. I think. I think. Then. As I said, from. Well, we. You know. You know. See, I saw it. I'm. I'm. But that's. For. So. That is. And so I think. Because. We used to stand. But sometimes. For. That's. So. Yeah. Just. Yeah. It's the. Thank you. Small friend. And. Yeah. Wait. So. I don't like. Yeah. Let me start running. The new. Yeah, I have such. Like. I was. Really. Yes. I'm happy. She's not. Maybe. You should. Yeah. Yeah. See. So we normally have. But I've. And. This. But I'm. I don't get. I don't. Oh, it's Christmas. So I'm trying to. So. So. Drop. Dones. You've been. So. This. Yes. I think. I'm. She's. I think. So. Yeah. I'm. I don't know why. It's. It's. Gotcha. Which has been two issues today. Yeah. It's good. I have long chairs. They're loaded. Then. Special. That's. Passion. So. I'm. She. And. That's. They think. We. That's. Another. It's got me. I'm. She. So. But I think. First. Yeah. That's. I'm. I saw. It's. We. Right. So. I was. Yeah. Right. You. Yeah. I'm. Same. No. I know. These. I don't. I'm. She. Thank you. Me. My. I'm. I'm. Yeah. Yes. Oh. That's. Good. That's. The problem is. In the. Um. Well. And. We. That's. As well. How. But. See. I'm. Well, that's. And. It's. And. Those. All. We. Um. Because. I'm. Hmm. Oh. Oh. Yeah. And. It's. Yeah. Awesome. Yeah. Yes. And. I see. Please. I'm. Oh. I'm. Yes. You can. I'm. I'm. It's. I'm. I'll be safe. Yeah. I don't. I'm. Not. I'm. I think. I don't. You know. You know. So. I'm. Yeah. It's. That's. If you. And. So. I. Uh. So. It's. I think. I think. Okay. If you're. Um. Because. I want. It's. Yeah. I don't know. It's. I guess. I'm. I'm. That's. Yeah. Is that. I'm. So. So. I think. I think. If. Actually. This is. It's. Sorry. So. That's. Is that. Is that. That's. Well. I'm. That was. Don't have to share. I think. I'm. You know. You got to retire. You got to retire. Just. Just. Uh. He's. Interesting.
Thank you, everybody. Okay, thank you. We now come to the next item on the agenda, item number twelve, which is proposed two single-story side extensions to Jasper's four Farley Close Oliver's Battery. And the presentation is Cameron Teak. Over to you, Cameron.
Thank you, Chair. The presentations were two-story and single-story side extensions to four Farley Close in Oliver's Battery. We have the location of the site plan. If the location plan showing the existing property as well. The site plan on the left, on the right, showing the property following the proposed extension. And the listing is from the boundary of the two-story extensions to the left. There are four hundred meters in two-story extension. But the single-story extensions are north of that point of the boundary. It's about one point six meters to the top of the boundary. It's about four sentences. Here we have an area first, a supplement area, with a sunup by the other triangle. You can see residential nature, like in the time area. Followed by more elevation drawings, if you can see this cat sign, which is a two-story extension, which can drop additional wood pitch, game land, the single-story extension projecting symbol. The increased height of the two-story extension, being zero point six nine meters from these three try, which you take on the ground. And we have a photo, more elevation, just in front of the access driveway to the four Farley Close. Followed by a photo of it, where the back day, including the central street in Farley Close, building towards the front of the property, more elevation. Next, we have the south elevation drawings, which are the side change of the property, going from the east to the left, at the drops. Here, there's the spot where you see the extension, and also the two-story extension as well. The longest, you can see the gap to the apex, final window in the two-story extension. Next, we have the focus of the elevation, moving towards the east. Followed by another photo of the elevation across it towards the west. Next, we have east elevation drawings, which are the extent of the two-story extension itself, and then dropping up to the single-story, which is a bit true. A little bit retaining the gap to the boundary to the north. You can also see the modest formal window. It would be the foreground, which is situated above the floor. Followed by a photo looking towards the installation of the property just in front of the driveway to the five. Next, you have the west elevation drawings, which propose two extensions will be revealing a single-story conservatory extension. We can see the extension plays in the two-story extension and the various single-story elements. These elements will not be regular in the foreground. I'll be looking into the top of the garden, north to west. Next, we have a photo showing the installation of the property, over the ceiling of the conservatory and the two-story part of the extension. Followed by a wide angle shot, which we see the elevation of the north with the values to the south in the north. Here we have the existing post-ramp or drawings, which are locations of the up, having been taken, showing the red outline. Followed by most first order plans, which are two additional bedrooms in the back room, with no windows, which need more elevation, and the middle of the south elevation, which is high elevation. Next, we have these proposed plans, which you can see how many features are essential when it's very expensive to use one more. Followed by the use of the north half of the property. And the western boundary. And finally, we do the south half of the property. Therefore, the proposal has been assessed against the public sector as well as all the factory, which I say, and specific core needs. And therefore, your recommendations for approval. Thank you.
Thank you, Cameron. Okay, we now move on to public speaking. And the first speaker is the objector, Mrs Celia Palmer. And Mrs Palmer, you can sit down this time. And you switch on the microphone while pressing the button at the front. And when you're ready, you will have three minutes. If you'd like to just move the microphone a bit closer to us, so we can make sure we hear you clearly. Thank you very much.
I am Celia Palmer, neighbour and spokesperson for all nine objectors.
Thank you. Go on. About.
That's just.
We did go. That's a problem. Okay.
I am Celia Palmer, neighbour and spokesperson for all nine objectors. You have recently received a copy of the objector's statement, version four, listing the areas where this application contributes multiple points in the Winchester District Local Plan, High Quality Places Supplement. The specific section on extension, the Oliver's Battery Design Statement and the NPPEF. These also note that previous application for a significantly smaller loft conversion of five Farley Close was rejected by virtue of its design, scale, size and form, as it would be out of keeping with the existing property, the wider area and visual amenities and characters of Farley Close and Shepherd's Close. The case officer's report contains many inconsistencies and generalisations. It has not considered this previously rejected application, nor the extension's correct height or impact on the neighbouring property, and he has clearly not taken into account the individual character of Farley Close. A site visit to include the rear garden of number three is respectfully requested. Farley Close is a small cul-de-sac of seven bungalows with very limited parking. Each bungalow has a private rear garden, which is not overlooked. And all bungalows enjoy some views of the countryside between existing properties and are screened by trees and planting. In summary, we urge you to reject this application for a massive extension because it will set an enormous precedent for both Farley Close and Shepherd's Close. It is totally out of keeping and out of proportion and scale to the existing bungalows in the close. It has a ridge that is significantly higher than the existing bungalow and even higher than the chimney spur. And it has elevations to entirely blank walls, making it visually unappealing and dominates number three's patio. And finally, it disregards the general principles dealing with extensions. It is not subservient to the existing bungalow. It more than doubles the bungalow's existing four-floor plan. It will dominate the street scene and overshadow immediate bungalows in the area. We hope and trust the committee will ensure planning policy prevails. I give you your attention.
Thank you very much, and thank you for sticking with it on three minutes so well. And members, do we have any questions for clarification from Mrs Palmer? No, thank you very much indeed. Do stay with us in this session. And now we have councillor Ryan Mitch in the parish council representative. Well, Brian. And you know, I still create the microphone. You've got three minutes whenever you're ready. Thank you.
Thank you. As the council is concerned, I think approved.
Is your microphone?
Yes. It's. It's. They go. No. Okay, sorry. The parish council is concerned that if approved, the application creates an undesirable and unwanted precedent, which will be detrimental to the quality versus character and amenity. Farley Close is a short cul-de-sac of seven homes, all houses of a similar single-story design, built around the same type and have similar ridge paths. The proposal seeks to extend number four by a very significant seven-story extension, which would create no better involvement, which would have a character that's spanning property to Farley Close. It also locked the existing long views between number four and number three, that would be Oliver's Battery. The Oliver's Battery, that finished site statement seeks to protect how views in the parish. And the two thousand and eighteen parish plan reportedly discredited by sixty-nine percent of persons as the most positive asset of living in Oliver's Battery. In two thousand and fourteen, a lot of planning application by five Farley Close for a loft conversion was drawn to a year and associated with destruction. The height of the proposed loft conversion of this application is no higher than the distribution, and therefore considerably lower and less faulty, and a single-story extension had proposed for the whole place. The application was rejected by virtue of its design, scale, size and form and housing in the existing property, and by dominating it and having adverse impact on the wider areas of the potential, the visual amenities and character of Farley Close and Shepherd's Close. Those were told to several concrete policy T P three, which was for the district local plan. The Oliver's Battery was a site statement. Yeah. Yeah. A couple of objections, though, just lost business to the committee yesterday. The rejection of my Farley Close's application should have been considered in the resolution, the current application for four Farley Close. Parish council takes issue with the number of statements, the case officer's report, in particular, the review of the proposed claim that the proposal would not cause any significant adverse harms of character and appearance in a surrounding area. The proposal states that the increase in ridge height of the two-story extension is by a marginal amount, and parish council would argue that any increase in height possibly considered in the context of a existing environment and that it is out of scale and local bearing. And this application should not be compared to other locations with the Oliver's Battery as the context is completely different. In summary, the ridge height of the 2014 application for neighboring property which was rejected was no higher than previous agreement, therefore lower unless faulty or disentho俺application, which raises the ridge height. Consequently, this application must also be confirmed as policy DP3 local plan of the end of the year as well as the Oliver's Battery village design statement that unfortunately rejected. If the committee advises to approve the application, the parish council wants to understand how planning policy has changed since the 2014 application was rejected, thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr councillor Mitch. And members, do we have any questions for clarification? All the parish council? No? Okay, oh, I did a call, that's the best.
Uh, I think you, uh, councillor, sorry. You referred to the ridge height and I noticed in the, uh, the office report that it's talking about ridge height increase of 69 metres, which is about height of the site.
Did you finish to the microphone, please councillor, please?
Yes, which is about, uh, 0.69 metres mentioned in the office reports. But your comments, as councillor mentioned, that it's too high. And yet that's about the height of this table. Uh, you say that is too high?
I didn't say it was too high, I said that any increase in height uh, would impact on the area and 2014 application was turned down even though the height wasn't going up, so we, um, we believe that any increase in height, whether it's half a metre or metre or whatever, just gives a threshold where the next person increases it by a little bit more and somebody else will increase it by a little bit more. So we want to avoid thresholds and want to keep the highest. But all these bungalows, it's a, uh, particularly close with problems also in design and we don't see why it's necessary to change that.
Yes, I know Oliver's Battery, I don't find it close, it's a big, I would say that's a good deal. But are you saying you suggested another shall we plant under the screen of the factory?
I'm not saying that at all, in other parts of Oliver's Battery, there are shover type bungalows. What we're saying is in the context of the Farley Close, this is not required, okay?
Okay, probably.
Thank you, councillor Benet.
Yes, I'm just going to page 115, which also in Farthing, councillor. Um, but it shows the neighbouring house. And with here from this picture, the neighbouring house has a very spire roof in number four. Is that correct?
No. The profits of those as well.
They have similar height, um, and maybe the way the pictures take them, that's all the bungalows are of similar lines. Uh, which the bridges are similar heights, um, there may be variations of ground level. In terms of ridge height, they're all the same.
Councillor Benet, I visited quite yesterday, I've confirmed all the bungalows are very similar and that here's a clear perspective rather than the factory.
I've visited them all, just looking at pictures, it was similar to that, so.
Yeah, thank you. Any more questions to councillors, no? Okay, lovely, thank you very much indeed, no councillor Mitch, no, thank you. We now move to our board councillors, we have councillor Hannah Williams and councillor Janet Warwick. And councillor Williams, you have five minutes when you're ready, thank you.
Okay, our objections to the extension for Farley Close, number one is the size of the close and the impact on parking. Farley Close is one of the smaller closes in Oliver's Battery with limited occupancy and parking, meaning that smaller driveways associated with the houses are in keeping with the bungalows' outdoor housing. A large dwelling like this will increasingly need more farthest residence and debt potential presence for other properties to obtain in the same way. This would make a real issue, the close is not easy to park in and it is not safe to park in on Kent's Lane. Um, a house of this size will also dominate much smaller houses surrounding it due to the size of this close and it will increase the overall cramming. Two, previous rejections, um, as mentioned before, five Farley Close was rejected because of the virtue of its design, size, scale, it would be out of keeping. Um, it is also contrary to DP3 for the local plan, you know, village design statement and framework. Also, it was rejected because of the post roof extension was contrary to the policy for the local plan and would directly over the neighbours. Equally, when one Farley Close was rejected, um, this was rejected because the unacceptable level of overlooking the private space of the neighbouring property, which is in contrary to DP3 for the local plan, village design statement and CC6 of the east southeast plan. If these smaller, less imposing extensions were rejected, there were reasons to those occupied by the residents of parish council and the other board councillor. It seems counterintuitive to allow significantly larger extension. The close proximity of the extensions to the neighbour's garden, meaning that they will be overlooked and have their private space invaded. The extension is right up to the neighbour's boundary, making it almost impossible to hide the evasiveness of the build. Three, concerns about size. The plans show that the, um, extended project could be in need to increase. This will dramatically change the appearance and character proposed, making it cut and overdeveloped. Also, the original plan showed residents had two kitchens and now the plan has a very large utility in one property and a slightly smaller kitchen in the other. We know of the reasons for the extensions of growing from the owners wanting to live there with their family. However, it is important to note that any annex needs to be occupied in association with dwelling houses or should be used for purposes and similarly to the dwelling house and at no time should an annex be occupied as an independent unit of accommodation. And the planning loads of the reasons for this is to prevent the creation of inappropriate units or accommodation possibly leading to over extensive use of pride. Our concerns are that this property could easily become too late to date. And when it was overcome, members have no such plans by allowing this development, you are opening up the possibility of this and therefore putting even more strain on the close's infrastructure and parking as well as moving to overcrowding. Also, housing stock. At your permission, you need to leave my board as a lot of bungalows which have been set in good sized gardens. These properties serve an important purpose in the district's housing stock. As a community with different age groups and housing needs, we need to ensure that there is enough of the right type of housing for all stages of life and for members of our community. The continued erosion of this key housing type has had a detrimental impact on our housing stock. Winchester has a very large aging population and high cost. If bungalows are continually extended, they become family homes, um, and larger family homes of that. And this means they cannot serve the purpose for which often they were intended. We know that it is left vacant to developers to build bungalows as the value of the property for the size associated is key, possibly less than if you built two story homes. Therefore, if we allow this bungalow to be extended, it opens the door for further development of this type. There have already been two rejected proposals for smaller extensions in the close. Therefore, we need to benefit to the community of allowing this key property to be depleted from our housing stock. So overall, this planned extension is not in keeping. It does not serve the community and therefore it threatens to cause overcrowding and damage to the character of this unique area. Personally, I feel that a site visit is important, but it is quite difficult for the committee to understand the true proportions of the setting without the, without visiting and therefore I would seek to ask for such a visit.
Thank you very much, councillor Williams. Members, do we have any questions for clarification to councillor Williams? No, okay, thank you very much indeed. Councillor Warwick, you have five minutes when you're ready.
Thank you so much, chairman, and thank you for allowing me to speak today, as you know, I was away last week and there's been a deadline. The area we're talking about today is served by a particularly effective parish council who are proactively engaged in the planning process with Winchester city council. They produced a village design statement in 2008, a parish plan in 2018 and a range of strong supportive policies designed to protect their residents' views and access to the countryside. The settlement pattern of Oliver's Batteries we picked up developed in the 1960s and 70s with central core of two story houses with surrounding areas of single story low density bungalows with open plan gardens. This uncrowded, low rise balance aspect is perfectly characterised in Farley Close. This is a particularly narrow road consisting of seven single story bungalows with occupancy typical between one to three residents. The Oliver's Battery village design statement acknowledges this. As properties change hands, they will be designed to convert a single story bungalow into a larger two story home. However, this has generally been resisted by planning decisions to date. Indeed, in 2015, as you've heard, our own Mr Finch is there, refused an extension to number five by virtue of its design, its size, its scale and from having a detrimental effect on the character of Farley Close. The plans for four Farley Close propose a 160% increase in footprint by creating a five bedroom house from a three bedroom bungalow with, as we've heard, a 0.69 metre increase in height. The consequent increase in bulk will significantly impact on the immediate neighbour at number three as well on the low level character of the close. As the parish councils confirm, this proposal is contrary to the Oliver's Battery village design statement guidelines. Importantly though, for this committee, the size and scale of these proposals may be considered contrary to national and city council planning policies in three ways. Thirty, paragraph 127c of the national planning policy framework, which highlights the importance of density and layout in relation to the neighbouring buildings and the local area generally. I would therefore challenge the office's conclusion that this proposal fits well with the surrounding context. The extended dwelling will dominate the neighbouring properties, creating additional traffic movements which will be at odds in the narrow close, unbalancing the present orderly layout of small, low rise dwellings. Secondly, our Winchester local plan policy CP13 outlines how any development should respond to the local context, which is why so many communities take the time to produce a village design statement and they establish their own local standards. New development should connect seamlessness to random developments in terms of layout, its scale and of space. The individual design, in this case, may be of high quality. However, the scale is very much at odds with its neighbours and therefore at odds with our local plan policy CP13. And finally, our local plan policy DM15 draws attention to distinctiveness and requires us to give regard to cumulative effects on each development on the character of the area. A single overdeveloped lot such as this will change the distinctive character of this area and is contrary to our policy DM15. This is particularly relevant in Oliver's Battery in general and to the Farley Close in particular. Members, I would therefore ask the committee to support the views of our residents, their village design statement and our own policies and refuse this application or as an option to defer this decision pending a site visit to Farley Close to fully appreciate the impact on those residents who have spoken so well today, thank you so much.
Thank you very much, councillor Warwick. Members, do we have any questions for clarification, councillor Warwick? No, yes councillor, please?
I think my question may be able to also listen, or check if it is. Okay, councillor Warwick, this is still being discussed. One of the issues we raised is one of the former clients for the extension which has, uh, previous councillor, parish councillor, not your councillor, but paracouncillor said it to 0.69 metres, which is about a state difference. Now, this is smoking sites. And one of the things the officer mentioned is that that use the difference in heights to gain extra within the building. Is the extension on the downhill side of the site or on the uphill side of the site? Is the question?
Councillor, where I'm being asked to form one is I, I don't know the extent of the slopes, so I, I don't have that formally to hand.
Councillor Warwick, I, I think it's more appropriate that councillor Pierce asks this question of the officer rather than you, your local plan consultant, please. So thank you very much. Thank you, councillor.
Sorry, councillor, I'm a person.
There's no need to repeat it, I'm sure the officer has heard it and will respond in due course. Any further questions to councillor Warwick specifically? No, thank you very much, Steve, councillor. Okay. Uh, our final public speaker is Janet Day, who is the supporter, Janet? Janet, Janet Day, there, lovely. Um, would you, you have three minutes when you're ready, thank you.
Good afternoon. This application seeks to extend our family home to accommodate three generations. Yourself, my daughter, the son-in-law and their baby's mum. We really support Bupham, Jane, Candice and we are happy to avail. Like numbers one and two for the close, this will be a shallow bungalow. It will have a single front entrance and doorway, a new modern basement system and a family garden. There will be no internal or external divisions, other than the usual doors for privacy. We need to extend because we've had tried very hard to respect the style of the close. The extension is set well back from the road. The bungalow front is a sexy road, it's unchanged. We consulted with the neighbours on our boundaries, supplying plans and providing visits. Only one of them has objected. The design entirely respects our neighbours' privacy and preserves the mature trees and shots in the garden which we lay. The plans allow for home modeling for future children. I have lived in Oliver's Battery for over 30 years. My daughter was born here and went to village primary school. I worked at this school for nine years and I've seen it thrive and struggle. Likewise, shops and closed offices. I truly believe that Oliver's Battery should encourage young families to locate here. The community needs all ages in order to function well, but house prices are exhausted. In recent years, the landscape has grown in the village, it's much altered. Forward-thinking planning decision capitals in a new lease of life, enabling demographic change and welcoming younger people. Roof lines have been raised all over the village, creating modern family homes of good quality as we see it to do. Our position at the lowest point of the cul-de-sac means that the new roof line will be below the level of adjacent property in the road, thus much reducing any visual impact. Our property is not in a prominent position and is not widely visible. There is no passing traffic and there are no passing pedestrians. This application is very clearly brought out. We believe it is a creative, sustainable design suitable for modern family life but sensitive to the local environment and beauty. And lastly, I would like to point out that they are still being in the premises, middle, thank you.
Thank you very much, I'm sure anybody would consider you an old dress, okay. Thank you very much, keep you within your three minutes. And members, do we have any matters of clarification for the speaker? No? Okay, thank you very much for your time. Um, Cameron, did you want to come back on any matters that have been raised in terms of policy and so on before we can have questions with you? No? Okay. Um, Mr Finch, if anybody, if anybody wants to answer first, that's probably the most appropriate to actually do that.
I think having, um, heard from all the people that spoke with members and etcetera and also, um, you know, I think what we're achieving, people feel, members feel that they need to do a site visit to be able to understand uh, the context and impact of developing the problem now would be as good as long as any show.
Thank you, um, I, I'll ask members, would you prefer to ask questions before or shall we debate site visit? I'm happy to propose a site visit, having visited the site myself yesterday. Felt that I would benefit from seeing it properly with an officer on hand and being able to access different parts of the gardens and so on. Um, so I would be happy to promote to propose a site visit, councillor Reed?
Chairman, in the light of the two more councillors as well, um, excuse me, to see the site, presenting the thing in his virtual program, I would second such a motion.
Thank you, uh, yes, thanks for that, too.
I have, it was a site. See what I need to say.
You're content that you've seen enough, again. Um, as I said, I, I went to the site yesterday, um, it did strike me that it and the neighbouring close that is also all bungalows do present a very particular style, uh, within the Oliver's Battery area. And whilst surrounding areas are lots of, lots of, um, shallow bungalows have arrived or indeed houses have been built on that place. These particular cases remain, um, prestige, shall we say. Uh, and I think that we need to take into account the, the previous, um, with, the, the previous applications which have been turned down. So I, I do think that we should, we should all be confident that we have seen the house in situ in, in its context. Um, and from neighbours' dogs, so councillor Edwards.
Thank you, Jeff. Um, I have visited the site, I've seen from public roads, of course, over there. Uh, and I have to say that my takeaway from that and the papers is that the proposal is sensitive and makes best use of the smoking site and the expensive site. And, um, at the moment, I, you know, if we get into debate, I can explain by more detail. Uh, I'm minded to support it, but of course, I have objection to a, uh, a discipline.
Okay, well, let's, let's take a vote on whether or not we have a site visit because we propose around a second, uh, councillor Clay?
Uh, as deputy, should I be voting on this? Because I would be probably sitting on the next, maybe just a moment.
Well, you still have a vote.
Sure.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so can I say all those in favour of a site visit, which will mean that we have to do the whole thing again at the next or when at the next meeting as soon after the site visit? I don't know, it can be, the whole of in favour of a site visit?
Five, Cameron.
And those against? And those against?
Three, Chair.
Okay, then we will have a site visit. I'm sorry, everybody, you're going to have to do this again. And we will advise of a billion of these, it will date to the site visit and then the subsequent planning will be where this will be addressed again. Council McLean?
Thank you, Chair. Can I, can I just ask how much weight we should be giving to this dog on this one?
Is that the village's site?
No, this is, this is the high-quality places which is.
Oh, okay. Let's finish.
Yeah, I mean, it's a two consideration, survives the relevance of the application, so.
So the whole section on pensions?
Yeah, so indeed, so it survives the relevance of the proposal, yes, you can consider that. And the other thing I was going to say, Chair, just for the purpose of minutes etcetera, in these, although I think I would be, I would be doing this for a week in terms of the reasons why they've furthered items members for the business. So we just need to, so we just are clear what purpose of the visit is. I think what we leave that is you just hear it, please.
Yes, I think it's, it's a case that we don't need to do the reports in and of itself sufficiently gives us enough information about the context, the wider context in which this application is set, and the particular impact on the wider community as identified by the parish council, the local councillors, taking into consideration the village's design statement and other relevant documents. That enough?
I would suggest that, Chair, just help me to know so we can clear what.
Do you think anyone wants to add to the reasons for the site visit? No? Yep? No? Okay, lovely, thank you. So that matter is deferred. And we will take a five-minute break just to kind of start together before we take item thirteen, which is Ashburton Place, Chorwell. How do you stop that time?
Different.
Yeah, yeah. Very good question. What's the meaning of this?
Just take a minute. Chair, I'm just going to make sure.
That's it? You didn't tell me. Not that one. It was a red. What does that mean? Wait, it's in the table, it's not. I haven't heard, please, it's called chair.
It says that. Yeah, it goes down. If it, if it says. I'm just seeing.
That's not touching.
If you get some presence.
So I won't be able to hear that. And you're right there. She managed. One of them is actually one of the problems. Oh, no. I owe you more than you owe me. I'm very tired of this. That's okay. Yeah, they can see what she knows.
But I'm very tired of this shit.
Yeah, Jane. It's getting older, thank you. So, I don't know if you want to rush away to be there.
So, you're sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Poor, I do. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I mean, we went out for the Saturday morning. I'm sorry, we do have this one, we got treated first. They told my boy, I should have taken that.
Oh.
But that was my whole one again. He's fine. Oh, I just. I think it changed quite a few. I'll go back to the chair.
Because I'm sure I don't have any legs. I'm not sure.
Not just that. You guys often.
I don't want to talk with everyone. I said, hey.
I have a chat back on the table. I mean, I'm going to have to do my time. We have our time. So I didn't make any attempts. There comes pace and that's. It's third place in the shop. That's our. I think that's our five minutes. We've released, we've got a mandate on the place. Council Reed has left the meeting, he has. Council McLean, would you like to move us back and see you?
I've got it, all right. No, that's. Okay, go on.
Sorry, I'm a tight. All right, I won't be rude, Frank. Have my. It's my idea.
Council, this was still nothing as well. Chris, can you scan it, Councils?
What did you draw?
Thank you, members. Okay, we have two more items on today's agenda. The next item is number thirteen. And twelve, Ashburton Place, fifteen, Chorwell, Caerwyngia, Winchester. And the thirty answer is Cameron Tate. Take away, Cameron.
Thank you, Chair. So this is, I've seen this for extension of Ashburton Place, definitely Chorwell, Winchester. So the site is located to the west, Chorwell, within the new development of Ashburton. Which you can see with a, with a new apartment being, it's ten apartments, with two, two-story ones situated to the left side itself. Here, a photo of the property marked by the yellow triangles, with the two, the dwellings, these are traded, one with the actual south and one just south of that, with the apartment situated to the east with the, the gaps as running the street, two blocks. Here's a photo, this will lead towards the property, which I've identified inside of here. It's a bound access to the apartment blocks on my side. Here we have west elevation drawings, which you can see, top being existing, open potting. The photos are from what is the site's extension of the dwelling itself, which matches the scale of the appearance of the ground floor of the property and matches its appearance and materials. Followed by a photo of the west elevation, which is the location of the first extension. Okay, I've read the west elevation, the actual ground is that. The extension, I've got the letter, it's not a photo, but I have four elements. Here we have east elevation drawings, which you can see, two right-hand parts of the photos, it's all the extended positional extension of the, of the existing potting itself. With the south elevation drawings, the potting, the south elevation not in effect, it lies exposed. Here we have further up to the, which you can see the actual access to the underground apartment, which also connects up to the boundary walk to the property. Next, we have the north elevation drawings, which you can see the change in the reason to the existing to the home, through the additional residential door and by the doors whilst attention for the cylinders and windows speaking of. Along with the extension itself being situated by the ground, you can see the water side of the drawing. Here we have the north elevation photo of the property, or the extension. Followed by the existing ground floor and roof planes. And then the first ground floor extension and roof plan drawings, which we can see the location of those extension is in line with the existing ground floor of the project. Also, it's a gap to the end of that, the end of that hall, which it's that's adjacent to, along with the new, the old roof lines, which match the scale of the appearance of the existing roof line, which on the first floor of the dwelling itself, which is the actual existing property. This is a photo, it's what's on the boundary, which is certainly not that near. Followed by a photo, it's like the boundary, which will interest as well. That's in my presentation, next recommendation, so I'll bring it up, thank you.
Thank you, Cameron. Okay, we now have public speaking. And we have Will Howard, yes? And you are objecting to this application. You have three minutes to switch on the microphone if that's important when you're ready. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Howard, for telling me to present. I live at number one, Ashburton Place, directly overlooked, which I'm extremely proud of now because of my terrace and a structure should be considered an immediate neighbour. Here representative has objected to the application, of course, of quite a few. We see that letters have been submitted. The main grounds for objecting this actually is, is going back to the original planning application for Ashburton Place, which was approved a while ago. And the tunnel was completed in February twenty twenty, so all the going facts, the early work is finished. And in that, the authority in the planning permission, it says clause twenty-three, which, which basically removes the development rights across A, B, C and E. And the specific reason given with that is quoted as in the interests of the amenities, the luxury that's around the area and the layout of the development. I looked up the definition of amenity and it mentions the tranquility in the green space and the trees and so on surrounding buildings. And I think in a brief glance, this is completely, clearly contrary to this. The, the extension is actually planned to go right up to a line of cullins over the land, which shows that it is really intended to have quite a very massive potential. So there's a, there's a feeling here very much of overdevelopment. And actually, one of the main reasons why many others purchased our apartments, Ashburton Place, was specifically for the design of the development as a whole. Many of us saw assurances for our citizens wanting to purchase the properties around the freehold properties that are still on the site. And we also were assured from, from removing all this community development rights as an implication of it, not difficult for, for firms to happen. I, I walk out of that, of that terrace every day. I admire the view. I really take it as, you know, the amenity of the area in true sense of that definition. And I'm certainly not the only one, thanks, by, by the extension theory, it comes off that amenity. That perhaps I reckon we obviously can get in the garden area as well, which, which wasn't shown in the pictures there, which is at the bottom end of the, of the site. And clearly, you know, further into that property, with, you know, the way that this is on that element on that extension, sorry, wouldn't buy it while there, if all residents that, that use it. There is another point around the design of the property. The cemetery of the building is quite clear to see, it's all very square, very angular. This would be the first triangular room in the site, site development. It's, it's multi-keeping with the character of it. And, and as I said earlier, it really does show that the development is pretty the total, total space available. It's also visible from the golf course, which is part of, part of the right way, right to the right.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you for keeping within our three minutes. Members, do we have any questions of clarification for with? Can I just say, I think you did say that removing permitted development rights doesn't mean no development. It just means that they have, you have to apply the planning permission where perhaps in normal circumstances, if you wouldn't have to, if you have this development rights. This doesn't mean you can't build it, it just means you have to take a good look. The officers have to take a very good look and as you're saying.
Yeah, we, everybody at the firm does understand that, the definition of that and the reasons for this development. I think it was just all the point that we've all fairly recently moved in the last fifteen months and get to all our purchases. And I know that many of us felt concerns and had a lot of concerns that because there were freehold properties at the back of our apartments, potential development could happen. And we just felt the reassurances that that was difficult because planning applications need to be submitted, so.
I mean, it is difficult because this application has come to flag a routine which the vast majority of applications do it. Okay, questions, members? Council Bettis?
Very much. As you mentioned, the group in space, which extends beyond that movement, how far does that extend from the edge of that core property? How far does the normal extend?
I think the communal gardens, that.
Yes.
Yeah. It extends, I don't know specifically the dimensions, but.
It's a lot, sorry.
I would say probably twenty feet, perhaps. It's a, it's a sort of triangular shaped plot of communal garden space there.
All right, not, not the huge, not the huge.
No, but that's specifically the point, it's a small space that we have, you know, the, the development for ten apartments, so our only garden space there. If you do like to enjoy that, especially at times like today where it's a lot of say. It's, it would certainly change the feeling of that, that space to have an extra bit of development. Just next.
Thank you. Any other questions? No? Okay, thank you very much indeed, Mr Howard. Cameron, did you want to add anything before we count the questions? No? And again, it's a quite small report, so I'm happy to take questions on the whole report. Council McLean?
Thank you, Chair. Cameron, can you go to the paper? Second, you, you've got the red line. Paper, all right. It is both the extension shown in there, it is fine. Right, it's a boundary. You have the photos. It's like all the photo drawings of the, of the forest. And shows you there's a square. That photograph, very hard to find. I would say.
So this is first extension, as I was asking, this is the difference of the first extension is an open, I think, it's a ground floor element in a triangular position. I don't know, I just didn't quite understand why I wanted to try and model this square with that extension. So yes, the post is a thing of the self, instead of maybe of a rectangular shapes. And then post extension cell is this sort of, if they're triangular extension coming off of existing ground floor, this element to create this sort of additional office space, which is showing the post, also retaining gaps to set out trees, to building inch tall, I think, along with sort of the tanks. But basically, to give the boundary wall to concede weight and say, for just to be about with a bit of the name.
Thank you. Can I just ask, if your red line, is that, is that all the area that is within the ownership of the advocates?
Yes, that, that's all the area, which is indicated in the ownership of.
That's, that's their law. That's, that's their yard.
Very good.
And so where is this, where is this, um, shared, uh, area of garden in relation to that?
I wasn't too aware as to where there was a complete garden, as I was, my view was, um, within the actual, I did set up, um, I'd say if you want, well, make it a corporate, from looking at the existing, I think, yeah, along with that, that's all the sort of, the text from my car, I'm not aware of that.
And, uh, can you, what, what is the, 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 the extension, the proposed extension, those, those hatch windows and windows, what would they look out of that?
So they'll be facing more towards the north, to be towards boundary, towards fifteen main, twelve avenue, and say, as you can see with this, as you can see the existing side, as a part of the property, this will be five top doors, the additional ways, is a, that's directed towards the north, towards north minus, the total hours.
Okay, thank you very much. Any further questions, uh, hold on.
Next, then.
Are you happy?
Yeah, next chair.
Yeah, okay, anybody else? No more questions? Okay, debate. Councilor Bettis?
Thank you, that was a deep sigh, actually. You know that I will be good, I hope. Uh, I was much struck by Mr. Howard's comment of the triangular nature of this development. It's very beautiful, in fact, and it seems to me that it is highly distinguished by its cubic design, uh, by the straight lines just all around. And if we had Georgian house laws and similar approach, uh, pros, uh, or principles, and somebody with triangular extension side of it, I think we would feel that that was contrary to the character and the mental value of the building and probably to various other things as well. Uh, and so there is something, which it may be hard to pin down in planning, but there is something about this which strikes me as quite egregious, particularly as it's coming so soon after the construction, and for the benefit of a very small or additional amount of space. Um, so, yeah, I suppose there may be, maybe a concern here about how we would reflect that direction, which, uh, in, in planning terms, but, um, I have great sympathy for the objections that we've heard.
Thank you very much, Councilor Bettis. Any further contributions, Councilor Leving and then Councilor Bettis, please?
Um, did you notice that, uh, any objections?
I think we're in debate, Councilor Leving, not questions, so. Did you have debates? Fire away. You think we're all still on the board? Okay, okay, I'm happy to. But that was definitely a debate, wasn't it, from Councilor Bettis?
I thought it was.
Oh, got a question.
Okay, I'm, I'm happy to go back to two questions, if you've got questions, but maybe, please.
Yeah, I noticed some of the objections, I think, which were there, air conditioning unit, that was, was that part of the application, you've got the air conditioning unit there, was that effect, was the button? So there is, there exists very, existing, uh, such air conditioning units on the side of this proposal, just to keep basically the movement process, this unit from elevation to east or east side of elevation of the proposed extension itself.
Councilor Pearson, did you have a question?
No, I was very respectful.
Okay, we will resume debate. Erica, okay?
Chair, can I just briefly, yes, can I just remind you that any reasons on one of the other rules, you can use the rules, it must be based on the children's expectations.
Thank you. We will address that if necessary later. Thank you. Debate, Councilor Pearson, did you have anything to contribute?
Well, I'm, I'm good to this, not, this, uh, uh, and I don't see any reason for disagreeing with what Cameron's conclusions are. And there is a lot of concern, those extensions not causing, maybe a bit of a start in terms of overbearing, overlooking just surrounding residential properties. If there is any overlooking, it's at, uh, the core bottom corner, this is another of these sites, of the neighbouring property. I personally, I don't say a lot of difference between a triangle and a square or a cube, uh, or angular, um, if you're talking about difference in human being, you'd say it's a racist comment, but we can't have racist comments about angular buildings. Um, it's, it, it's, it's curious reason to say, I don't like this, it is triangle, but the rest of it is cuboid. It's a twenty first century design, um, which has been accepted. And to angle off, I was going to say square off a small section of the property with a triangular extension is difficult. And I'm looking again at that paragraph, it says one thirty five, and I agree entirely with this. There's no issue regarding parking, no issue regarding landscaping, no issue of parts of impact on the character of the general area. All these are battles amongst its force when they start to redevelop, show post avenue. And my goodness, there's some battles there. Um, you'd never believe it, I mean, it's first from planning committee, when this first one of these applications came in. But well, anyway, I agree with Cameron, so, I'm positive in favour.
Thank you, Councilor Pearson. Uh, I'll put in my two pennies. Um, in terms of this summer, yes, oh, Councilor Bettis, did I say you were coming in the morning? I did, okay, well, I'll defer to you then. Bye bye, thank you.
I'm just really commenting on Councilor Bettis' point, the fact that it's triangular, I don't know whether the fact that it's triangular is partly to, um, solve the problem from the, the neighbours above, the overlooking aspect. I keep it triangle, but they do have a view of more grass, whereas if it was spectacular there, um, it brought up more of that views. But perhaps there is a, a reason for the triangle today, and, and why.
Thank you, Councilor Bettis, thank you. Um, okay, the city of interest to trust in terms of design has no objection. In my experience, if the city of interest to trust thinks something is inappropriate, they will see soon with person. So, um, I think it's a simple infirm, I think the world has changed if these were designed. And obviously the, 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 needs a study to work on, like, who needs somebody to work on with. Um, so I, I really think in planning, to the very least, we have very little to object to, although I do understand the concerns of the investors, but I suspect that you will find that once this is built, you will barely notice it. Councilor McNamee, you have a contribution to the debate?
Thank you, yes. Um, I'll, of course, you've got your, um, I'll hold a high quality place, extension on the extension. And you go to eight dot two, it says extensions are often designed to reflect the character of the existing building, all of which provide advice of certain things. And I'm just trying to get ahead of that, whether this reflects the character, you know, of the, the existing building, or is it totally different to the character of this building? And the existing building being mildly square is, sorry, I think it's actually different. So that's the big concern to me there.
Oh, Councilor Oxford?
Thank you, Chair. Um, just a small station, I'm not sure whether this is the amount of it, planning through the, the lots, the air conditioning unit, it's looking at eight one four five, it's currently located well away from the balcony of the apartment blocks. And I think I see on the detailed plans, hard to see it, that the air conditioning unit will be moved to below the balcony of the apartment blocks. I would have a concern of the noise that that unit is creating that close to the balcony of, of the town building. So, I, maybe there is a consideration, we can pretend the improvement with that , um, air conditioning unit is not moved close to the apartment blocks.
Um, is this a request to look at the conditions?
Yes.
Okay, Cameron, do you know exactly where the existing, uh, unit is and where it's to be moved to?
Chair, eight one four five, you can see me with this. Chair, our whole, my whole management, you can show it, if you can show it, it's always near, near as we can. So, yeah, it's on the ground floor, and it does show the relocated location of the actual AC unit, which is there, as shown.
You just want to show me the details?
Yeah, it is here.
I'm going to determine it.
Not currently shown on. I can't read that, it's, it's. It, it's actually, Chair, on your plan, and so.
Sorry, sorry, one less time. So my question to this bench is, is it possible to condition where the air conditioning unit goes? And we're just discussing that.
Uh, Chair, it's actually shown on the, on the plan to be relocated. So, um, the only condition I think you might be able to, I suppose, anything to do with, if anything's required by way of insulation or whatever to, you know, baffle their noise, if, if that were a consideration, is on page one hundred and fifty two of your papers, where it says proposed ground floor roof plan drawings. If you look at that, and you've got your wedge shape, triangular shaped extension at the top, at the very top of the drawing, and you can see AC unit marketing, where there's a, a boot, it's a boot room there or something, you look directly above that, on that drawing, the triangular outside wall, right at the top where it joins the existing building, the AC unit. And that's relocated from where it's shown on the photograph, um, which obviously is a part of the existing building and that was shown. And it'll be on, uh, page one or five of your papers, you just see there on the corner, between the two single story square elements of the Sopatia area, there's the AC unit there by the, uh, large rectangular window in the centre of, of that photograph, Chair. And I think they're, sorry, yes.
So the, the AC unit will remain at ground level?
Yes, that, that's the intention shown on the plan, yes.
Cameron?
Well, yes, the current, the current property, there are two AC units, and the photos that are named, just situated between the existing windows there, that is one of the existing AC units. And then moving back to this way, there's another additional unit on the Sopatia area. So the only AC unit we move in, the one which can see the left hand side of the photo, between the two of those, and so that will be moved to, I should bring up the brass floor, the plan again, to up this wall here.
So that's the plan, then?
I don't think that's the only thing to talk, you. Thank you. We solved that, we didn't think there's any significance to figure this through position of the units, in relation to the balcony, but, okay. Any more debates? No? All right. Okay, well, we now will move to the vote then. So this application is recommended for approval. And I see all those in favour of approving this application. There are six members, Chair. And there's against? I'm sorry, it's five to go. Five to, yeah, okay, so that application is approved. Thank you very much, everybody. Um, we do need a five minute break to allow the next, um, officer to come in and take over the presentation slot. So, um, can we resume at ten to four, please? Did we have all the public speakers for the next item present?
We did.
Yes, Chair? Lovely, thank you very much. Okay, welcome back to the planning committee. Our final item for today, number fourteen on the agenda, um, is application at the Pines. um, is an application at the Pines, 12 Downs Road, South Monston. It's a wonderful retrospective application. Um. Um, following the conditions to the previous planning permission, the author presenting is Captain Watson, their own chief and director.
Thank you, Chair. The application, as we mentioned, is retrospective. Uh, it's for the demolition of existing bungalows and construction of three piece dwellings. Site in South Monston on Downs Road. And the site, um, is a sort of fairly linear, um, core, but with a spur leading off to the top right hand corner. So here you can see, um, the left hand, at the top, on the left hand side is plot A. Uh, plot C on the right hand side is where the former bungalow was. And then plot B at the bottom, um, that's the, uh, two storey dwelling, as already approved. Here you can see plot A, uh, so plot A, uh, has, um, three bedrooms. Um, so we've got the ground floor and first floor, uh, plans there. And then the elevations, uh, with, um, some, uh, brick built, um, roof tiles and tin cladding on the first floor. Plot B, um, in the plot, um, three bedrooms, uh, and you see, round first floor, I have a roof pan. And the elevations there, again, same sort of materials as plot 10. And plot C, um, we've got three, uh, sorry, two bedrooms here, um, and. Yeah, two bedrooms, uh, first floor, and one bedroom on ground floor level, which is also labeled as being a sunup or study. Then, these be elevations for plot C, and again, similar sorts of materials being used there. Then you have a site section, so, um, where my person is, so looking at the top, uh, section, this is, uh, through the middle, um, the, the buildings at the rear, uh, plots A and C. Um, so you can see sections through the middle of those, and then on the right hand side, we've got the new dwellings that have been constructed uh, to the east, um, on the site to the east. Um, section AA, which is at the bottom, um, and it runs, if you can see, the key, where the person is, it runs, uh, transversely through length of the site. So you can see, uh, on the right hand side here, that's the, um, where the location of the existing bungalow that now choose for redwelling. Then we can see, moving to the middle, we can see number 75, uh, Downs Road. Um, then we've got a garage, and then we've got the particular walnut house, which is the, the first property in, in our site, uh, that we built. Here we've got, uh, another site section and a street elevation. So this site section, CC, which is at the top, um, that is going through the middle of the first building, certainly one nearest to the road. And so we can see that in the middle here, on the left is 69 Downs Road, and on the right, 75, which has got the new dwellings, um, on the neighboring site. And then at the bottom here, we've got street elevation, so you can see walnut house, which is at the front of the block, and again, the neighboring properties on either side. So moving on to photos, these photos were taken by the contractor at first floor level. Um, so you can see, uh, we've got the windows at the top here, this is the gable end, um, of the two properties to the rear of the plot. Um, we've also got photos on the next line down, taken from, uh, first floor level of the front block, looking to the front of the block, looking towards the rear. Um, and again, right hand, middle, um, middle row photographs, we've got another view of, uh, the two new dwellings. Uh, and you can see the relationship between that and the new dwellings on the neighboring plot. Um, and then we've got a couple more photos, um, here, uh, again, showing that the bottom left is from the, the top floor, um, of the new dwellers at the rear, and you can see the relationship with the neighboring, um, new dwellings. And, and we've got a view from the rear of the site towards, um, walnut house, that's its scoreboard, uh, which is the plot back, uh, past the front of the plot. Uh, so, um, we've got some views here from numbers 24 and 26 right close, which are behind, um, the application site. So you will see on the left, if you can, 24 right close, you can see the gable, uh, first floor gables, um, of the rearmost two properties. At 26, we've got, uh, the same view, but just a little bit more centrally positioned. And then on the site, um, on the left hand side is, uh, the driveway, um, which is between, um, the frontmost house and, uh, number, um, the number, sorry, I forgot the, um, house number is importantly, uh, but the existing bungalow, um, to, sorry. You can't see, it's plot C, oh, sorry, 20. Um, yes, so we've got a view here, looking towards the, um, frontage of Downs Road, and that's on the left hand side. And then, uh, on the right hand side, we've got, um, a view from, taken from standing by the rear ground room towards plot A and C, which are the rearmost properties. That ends the presentation, Chair, for me to take any further suitoria, okay?
Thank you very much, and your recommendation is full permission.
Yes.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. So we now move to public speaking. Okay, um, Graeme Johnston, yes?
Yes.
Yeah, so you're very welcome, and you have three minutes. Um, just press the button, and then we are ready to start the, the show on the screen. Thank you.
Um, I'm speaking on behalf of all residents of Rice Close, um, who are close to these buildings, and our objections are expressed specifically at plot A and C, that currently approved as two low level bungalows. There's a need in South Monston to leave smaller houses that are accessible, that are less mobile in our society, and bungalows are much sought after, which is why we did not object at all to the current approved plans. But building two stories will exclude these people, and will only serve to increase the profits of the developer. These two properties are positioned so far back on the plot, and so directly against the boundaries of all the surrounding bungalows on Rice Close. They are not impacting on Downs Way as such by the developer, and thus, any high builds on Downs Road should be excluded when comparing properties. The build is clearly already overbearing, unlike the design statement, and as witnessed by K Stottis, Catherine Watson, who came to beautiful build from our gardens, whilst taking pictures with what I consider quite an obscure lens, if it makes the garden really long, it's important. The properties along Rice Close are entirely made up of low level bungalows. There are no two storey dwellings, but proposed two stories are entirely like any other neighboring property, so the scale and design of the development would be entirely out of keeping. Buildings to this height were set a precedent for Rice Close, but we're ensuring that any objections to an extra floor to our bungalows in the future could not be ignored. The proposed site of the development is at such an angular height, it's actually built on higher ground than our existing bungalows, that, that we would be severely overlooked from the top rooms of a new development, resulting in a serious invasion of our privacy. The windows will look directly into our gardens, living rooms, kitchens, in the case of Mr. Bull over there, in straight into their bedroom. How can this not be classed as an invasion of privacy? We would like to point out that the, that dwelling proposed would not fall within the definition of a fallible housing. I think I'll go after about £712, ridiculous price. Please also note that the developer has already constructed the upper floors, made provision for the very large, very large, overlonged gate door and windows, installed the roof seals and the roof grubs, and this morning was putting in the, the fittings for all the valid windows. Actually, this is prior to the, against all the existing statements, they, they exist in, um, um, it, sorry, lost my place. This is actually going to be approved plans prior to their meeting. Um, do you actually notice something we don't care about in this bill, so I don't understand it? Please look closely at our pictures and videos, which we extend, I'm sure you've got all those. As this, as we send us, all the lives of the surrounding main families are going to change here. You're the only ones standing between us and all the others.
I'm afraid your time is up.
Okay.
You almost finished your sentence.
Yeah, I pointed out our clear reasons for objection, but none of us could find any support, so thank you for your consideration.
Thank you very much. Members, questions that.
Yes, Chair, I just heard mention that the videos are better, perhaps. We haven't, we haven't.
Well, they sent two councillors' own emails.
No, no, well, that's, I sent them to the planning department, perhaps.
Uh, no, they, they, they sent us. No, we wouldn't have seen them, I'm afraid.
Even, even though, when I rang them, I said, you know, I said, yes, and they showed me that we will see. Are you on that, Nathan, is it, all right?
Okay, Mr. Binch, that, those, those ones have been passed on to councillors, so they're not, um, going to take a rest, the station.
My answer checked. Um, normally when they get sent to the planning mailbox, and they're disseminated to the relevant officer, um, I haven't seen, um, any email, Gmail with, um, photos and videos, um, on it. Um, so, I, I, I don't know, um, if the gentleman is perhaps thinking of his, um, initial objection, and that, I don't know, that there was a video that, that wasn't.
Having spoken to Nathan, he said, please tell him again, which I did.
Right, okay. I fully apologize for that, I'm not sure what's happened with that.
Okay, moving on, thank you. Any more questions or clarification for, uh, Mr. Johnston? Thank you. You have made your, oh, councillor, okay.
Sure. Well, what dates, then, already, so. Yeah, so, it's, okay, I would, when we did this, um, when we, obviously, when we are captain, we did this on, I don't know, later, thank you.
Thank you. You have, you have made your objections very clear, and the issues that, that are considered very clear, so thank you very much. But councillor Ben, do you have a question?
Chair, um, I visited the site, and I noticed that the vacant properties are central lot, um, 73, 73, doesn't it?
But on Downs Road.
But down, on Downs Road, and they've been converted into similar sort of houses, as the ones in the area in Central Lot.
Yes.
Do those impact on the aspects of Rice Close as well?
Uh, we objected to them at the time, but because they were only halfway down to where the beachhead goes, it was said, they can actually, they're even not far back, go over to that, these are about much closer.
About the same height as the proposal here?
I, I think so, yeah, that's, when you're up, and then.
They are a good distance from.
Yeah.
The neighboring.
Luckily for us all, there's a massive break hedge in the way we screened, we can still be screened off in early winter. But the, no, they're not.
Thank you. Okay, no more questions. Thank you very much indeed, Mr. Johnston, okay. And now we have the ward councillor, councillor Stephen Godfrey, welcome. Uh, we know you have five minutes, and we're relieved whenever you are, just.
Thank you, and Chair, but it's always a delight for every speaker, each meeting, so always a question is you, Harry. Um. For the last six years or more, I've been lobbying for Secretary of State at the DCLG about the need for local planning authorities to be able to control the inclusive planning system, on the use of retrospective planning applications without any financial penalty. This application is a typical example where the LPA is put to great expense with no or little contribution to the act. Alan Chandler, I hope you will be able to express your support for my lobbying, and, uh, also approach the council secretary of state to see change in the treatment of retrospective planning applications in the future. As mentioned by Mr. Johnston, this application will affect the character of this area of the village. We've all prompted a lot right close being bungalows. The application site for plot A and C are much closer to Rice Way than they are to Downs Road. So I'm greatly disappointed that no reference has been made in the report or the office's presentation to the village designer statement, particularly as a parish council do not support this application. In light of this negative impact on the character of the area, I'm surprised at the recommendation to approve, uh, this application, particularly when the report identifies further harm to neighboring properties by the initial impact and the loss of privacy caused by this development. Although this application would only lead to a two foot increase over what had been approved previously, the increase is at over eight feet when compared to the original property on this site. The office of protesters do not do a justice compared to where they are today, uh, where the rafters are now in place, giving it its full height and its full significance to neighboring properties. Had the original application included this extra height and the overlooking window at the end of the building, I'm not sure approval would have been granted, there would certainly be more objection. However, if you are minded to approve this application, then I must ask you to improve condition eight. The planning officer's report of the original application and for this application, as well as the applicant, acknowledged the loss of privacy caused to property on Rice Way and to number 69 Downs Road, at the front of the site, by the inclusion of the large windows at each end of a property on the plot A and C. The proposal to put obscured glass on the lower half of these, uh, of these, um, properties demonstrates this acknowledgement. However, requiring this condition will not achieve any reduction in the loss of privacy, as these windows can be opened. And there is no requirement to obscure the glass at normal eye height. Condition eight achieved enough, and approving this application would, without amendment, would be perverse. You might as well require obscured glass on the ground floor. To avoid making such a perverse decision, so making it open to challenge, I ask you to require windows on plots A and C on the first floor, at a normal and silent end, to have obscured glass in non-openable windows up to a height of 1.8 metres above floor height. This requirement was put on a property not five plots to the east of this application site. Thank you very much.
Thank you, councillor Godfrey. Um, questions or clarification, members, to councillor Godfrey? No? Okay, thank you. We now move on to the supporter, Ben Kelly, who's the agent. Ben? Yeah, lovely. You have three minutes. Um, when you start, just start when you're ready.
Thank you, Chair, thank you councillors, and good afternoon. The proposed changes would see the content of plot A and C increase to be one and a half storey properties in the same positions, uh, status in the business. In recent years, the build context around the site has changed to a significant degree, with a far higher prevalence of two storey development, particularly on Thames Road. There have been several developments in proximity to the site, which demonstrate that multi-storey residential development should now be considered acceptable. And I think also that the image on the screen at the moment, those site sections, and I think there might be another page that may, that may be slightly improved, uh, particularly useful with demonstrating the difference in height between what is proposed, uh, and, and neighboring developments which are already in place. The scale of the proposed development is considered to be appropriate, given the proportions of the adjacent developments which run on to Downs Road. These developments have set a clear precedent in two storey properties along the road, are clearly visible within the street scene, and form part of the established character of the area. They're clearly visible within the street scene and form part of the established character of the area. It should be noted that plot A and C is proposed at a rich height, which is one metre lower than the rear plots, which form part of the development under fifteen over slash zero one eight nine five, which is directly adjacent to the development site, with each house also zero point eight metres lower than these plots. These differences between the current proposals would be significantly smaller than the adjacent properties and would be less proposed on the surrounding area. Therefore, whilst taller than the areas previously approved on the site, the proposed properties tend to be entirely appropriate for the area. Separation distances between the proposed buildings and neighbouring properties will not change when compared to their developer. The proposal will not amend at any windows, but first of all, they will be in close proximity to existing properties. And there are, there are windows on plots A and C which seem to be the contention of this application. But as already noted, these will be obscured glaze from halfway up. Prior to the submission of the current application, the applicant engaged in discussions with the neighbours at sixty nine Down Road and twenty six, twenty eight, quite close. During these discussions, comments about the creation of new windows were noted. And following this, this is why that's obscured glaze has been proposed. Is there any questions there? Thank you very much for listening.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr Kelly. I have a question. Those controversial windows in the gable ends. So they're, you're proposing that they'll be part glaze, part of obscured glaze up to the...
That's correct.
Are those opening?
They are remotely windows.
So are you happy for us to condition that they are not opening?
Yes.
Are you going to propose that they are open at the top?
Yes, sorry, so yes, sorry. I misunderstood your question to the plot. They do not open, that was the question. But yes, if that's the condition, which councillors would like to see, then that's acceptable.
Well, only at the top or not?
Either, either.
Okay, thank you. That's useful to know. Right, any other quick councillor Kay?
Thank you, Chair. Thank you very much for your presentation. Just one question, we've got a senior experienced agent and yet we had for us a retrospective application. I wonder, being or with experience, having actually come to us first to get the changes approved, regularised properly.
I mean, I personally, my experience and we were, we were approached to submit this application once the, once the leader of the road, sorry, the CEO. But it wasn't the case that we advised to do a retrospective application. That was, that's what was needed. And the, I mean, the proposals that are in front of us need to be assessed on the basis of whether the proposed is acceptable. And to a certain degree, whether they are retrospective or not is irrelevant for the planning determination.
I do understand that. I'm just asking the question, either yourself before the developer, don't mind. But this retrospective application, as you heard from councillor Godfrey, and it's not the way to proceed. I know it's, you've said it's not, you've said it's not.
I'm not sure, I think that's a comment rather than a question.
It's a bit of a, why not? It's a comment of moral.
Yeah. Councillors, please, we, I would suggest that your fellow considerations, indeed. Thank you very much. Right, any further questions or clarification for Mr Kelly, please? Yeah, councillor Lee.
You know, it's a partial obscurity. I would, if you look, if you have those type of look, the plot's bottom, then that would stop any problems with the builders in the area. So they accept it, will they?
I, I mean, this is, changes we would normally made, you know, understanding the condition requirement of the windows to be non-opening. And the changes to me that that whole window would be, would be obscured glaze, I think at this stage are too late.
But surely you are building, we have a well-planned motion yet for this to set forward the provision that is after we would be set.
Yes, okay, this.
I think that's the end of the question. Thank you very much indeed, Mr Kelly. Okay. Catherine, do you want us to update us on anything following those comments? Okay.
Thank you, Chair. There's no further comments to bear.
Okay, it's, again, it's not a very, what's, I'm happy to take questions to Catherine on any part of the reports. Councillor Lee.
Catherine, my memory thing was good, but see if we remember the site as it's from. If you're, is this site improving now? Or are you looking at that, is it started?
I don't know.
Because there was one in the back of the draft last time.
Yeah, it went the next little one.
Councillor McKay.
Thank you, Chair. I'm just a little bit concerned that we didn't receive the evidence for, from the objective, that is obviously sitting somewhere on a huge file somewhere, but should have come out to us as members. Is it reasonable to ask for it if, why we are bad here?
Normally, we ask objectives and everybody else if they want to give further information to councillors. We ask, so it directs councillors, you can address this. And it is not normal, in my experience, for someone that's sent to the offices to then expect that it's passed on to councillors, so that's specifically...
But I'm like, I think Mr Johnson's just being, I'll debate with the neighbours. We won't be able to say that, as a judge, really. What's the decision then?
Happy.
Would there be a, thank you, Catherine, I'm going to answer that. Is it efficient to defer this? It would be insufficient reason to, sufficient reason to defer if members feel that the information is required for them to make decisions. Information is not required, and they don't make a decision without the material that was ordered. I am sadly, apologies, if not actually to the planning department. And then they go again and continue to make the decisions.
Right, I think I've had enough information, but what do other members think? Councillor, that's it.
Yeah, fine. I think I had enough information to stop the decision at this point.
Okay, I think, are you proposing to defer councillor Kay?
Yeah, I'm not seeing the evidence. Someone's taken the trouble of producing a video and photographing it, sending it into the planning department. It's not being disseminated to the members, there is something around it, you want there.
Do, do we have a second of councillor Kay's proposal that we defer this? No, we don't, I'm sorry, King.
That's fine, but I didn't have to ask.
Oh, councillor, please.
We know, I can understand where councillor Kay is coming from. But I would suggest that this evidence is coming to the latest stage. It's actually no different from a lot of the other evidence that's actually put onto the website for us to look at, much of which does not come directly to us as members of the planning committee. But I can't actually see the difference between what is submitted and for, I can only think it's a list of reasons suggesting any further than that. It might well automatically think, oh, we have to prepare it on the website along with all the rest of the material. The case office report, the Jordan, that this effectively becomes our mire. Although the other information is available for us to see if we so wish. And as I guess, most do not look further. I do, time to time, as you know.
Yeah, councillor.
This could be one of those things.
Right, so we, we said it's not a second, it's not a referral, so let's move on. Are there more questions for the case officer, please? I have a question. It's quite a sensitive question. If this application had come to us from scratch as opposed to a retrospective of buildings, drawably odd with buildings, would it have also been recommended for approval?
Thank you, Chair. As you know, we assess each planning application on its merits. If there was something about this current application that is considered to be significantly harmful, both in terms of appearance, impact on neighbouring properties and character of the area, and even though it's retrospective, it's entirely possible to refuse it if there were any such issues. So to answer your question, Chair, if it came into me fresh, not as a retrospective application, I would still be making the same recommendation.
Thank you very much. Okay. More questions, councillor Westwood.
Thank you, Chair. Question following on from your question, Chair. In the report, you've approved this. But there is clearly overlooking either windows that are put in place for the actual planning mission, current planning mission. And there has been a concession to obscure those windows. I'm trying to understand why you didn't recommend that or that as a report.
Thank you, Chair. The obscure glazing of the bottom half of the windows was something that the applicant brought forward from their own, you know, where they put the application in, they put forward with those, that partial obscuration of the windows. And having assessed that and in assessing the impact and impact of that, I've determined that it's acceptable. We wouldn't cause such a significant level of harm that, you know, would impact the neighbours so significantly. But I obviously do appreciate there's been comments today about making windows entirely obscured and non-opening. That's a matter for the committee to determine or not they want to amend condition eight. But to answer your question, the applicant brought forward that particular type of window and I was content that that resulted in potential issues.
Thank you very much. Any further questions, members? Okay, before we go into debate, I just wanted to propose that we do amend condition eight to allow only top opening windows. So I think given the situation that we often find ourselves in, I think it's unreasonable. People shouldn't be able to open windows at all. But assuming that the upper half of the windows is above eye level, I don't think it's unreasonable to ask that they should, if either be non-opening or only opening at the top, so that that's an obscure glass doesn't lose its effectiveness. Is that agreed by members? So, councillor, councillor Bench.
Thank you, Chair. Just one thing we need to be just mindful of is if that conditions to be reframed is I'm just supposed to be doing the control, means to scan ventilation. So the only thing I would just add is that we probably need to just check. For example, they would be non-opening at all unless there was an emergency or something that I was to make sure that that was otherwise, which is, so it may not be an issue. But it's just something to bear in mind in terms of, you know, things like getting to stay, that's what I'm conscious of. I have seen conditions used to call that are non-opening windows up there in emergency. And there's a mechanism to control that. So it's just something to bear in mind. The ventilation, of course, I think if you're opening the top section, we lose only sort of that in terms of ventilation, but I'm just conscious that if it's not open, it's very important.
Is there anything we can do in terms of landscape to help mitigate that overlooking as well? What boundary treatments will be requested and what that one, could we ask for taller trees to be mounted or something?
Chair, so the conditions from the 2018 consent have been carried through to this, this application. In conditions three, condition four of H161 is that all existing boundary treatments should be retained and maintained, but conditioned perpetually. But condition three also says that full revised details of part and soft landscape works should be submitted, and that does include planting grounds for trees, hedges and other planting. So under the remit of that condition, you can control the type of soft landscaping that might be a good idea.
Thank you, Mr Bench.
Just again, as the data portion, we wouldn't usually put in things like plants or privacy springing purposes. We would have soft assimilating the development into the environment, etc., and softening all that sorts of stuff. I think, I think basically what members have to do is decide whether or not they are comfortable with what they've heard and seen, both from the case officer and also from the speakers, as to whether that relationship with the properties, particularly in terms of behind. And the first of all, in those reasons, is the main point of discussion and the proximity to the boundary and what views across that may afford. And you've obviously heard from the agent, you've heard from the object behind, is whether that's right. I think, I think it would be a difficult boundary, then requiring soft landscaping for the purposes of springing views, loss of privacy, yes, probably not something, nor would we do it for landscaping purposes, not really to protect somebody's privacy, because that would be quite difficult to enforce. But I think members just have to make a decision based on the relationship between the revised units on those two rear plots and the relationship that has resulted in the relationship of the properties to the nearest place. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much for speaking. I think, I think we'll agree that the obscured glazing will deal with the privacy aspect and that the landscape, the soft landscaping will deal with the softening, the impact of this otherwise over there in development of the neighbours. Thank you. So bear that in mind in the conditions. Okay, let's move into debate, members, thank you. Councillor Pearson.
Thank you, Chair. I've got a soundly disturbed about this one. I hesitate to say the builder's push his luck, it seems, that it's going to get E, G, it's going to get away with it. These two windows we're talking about, they're facing a direction right closer out here, are the points of issue. The, these are bedroom windows and it's a bedroom windows with obscured glass, or bedroom windows without ventilation is, I really think, an excuse for allowing the builder to do something of that. If, for example, we had a book windows in there and it depended on the lights of these bedrooms from Felix windows, and that is not that unusual, I would have been much happier with this. But this key has not been done. The pictures we've seen from the neighbouring sites of those two windows are true. The space of a white key there would be very difficult obscured by any planting of a tree that did not take up one room that actually is available on that site. You're talking about a tree that maximum height would be something of a fortune of things. But there's not space for a tree to develop to that extent. So, I, as I say, I hear what's said, the appearance, well, that's fine. Harmful to neighbours, overlooking is an issue. And you don't get away from that. I know this, we bend over backwards, the builder makes a mistake. I've had so many versions, it always creates issues. But here there is a mitigation, Felix windows instead of those gable end windows. It's as simple as that. You get all the height you need in the bedroom, very much, it is a bedroom. As I say, I recognise what the case officer was saying about approval and all this sort of thing. But as I say, it would leave the person very bad in, say, my mouth, trying to prove that. But the solution is so obvious. That's his bedroom, so instead of his gate, then it was...
Thank you. And further to be it, councillors? Councillor Leining and councillor Westwood.
I am very disturbed with this particular application. Why am I being directed from the cabinet?
Why am I the builder reluctant from having that building without consent? I'm sure that I'm not consent. Um, and if you need any consideration, if you're to be purple neighbours, it is a brand new application.
Councillor Lenny, could you speak, actually?
Very. I feel that these have no consideration to neighbours. There is a lack of privacy to the neighbours, but there's a major impact on the neighbourhood. Uh, and also I feel that the increase in size of buildings makes this a bright road development. So I'm extremely concerned with this, because a lot of people say that, I might, but at this moment, it might be time for kicking on the sound button.
Thank you. Councillor Bennett, please.
Thank you very much. So much for doing the councillor. Um, principal against this type of retrospective invention, particularly whereas they just went back and built what they were supposed to build, it would be quite acceptable to all those around. Uh, I refer again to a question I asked of Mr Johnson. If you look on page 155, the map of the area there, there are quite lots possibly giving you a very clear position of the new world houses in number seventy five and number seventy nine. And they are very much further nearer downs from than they are to rights close. So, um, I can fully appreciate that those of those seventy five and seventy nine might be of similar height, they are a much greater distance from the neighbouring properties. Uh, I I think the option is, just go back and build, we have permission for in the first place, please.
Thank you, councillor. Take councillor Westwood.
Thank you, Chair. I'm really peeled for Mr Johnson's and his neighbours in this matter. Um, if you look at the pictures on page one seven six, sitting in the garden, you know that the builder has permitted planning permission to build in bungalows. You're sitting there and you see that built over the ends of the garden and going up. I feel really sorry for the anxious sitting there. Um, the builder has planned permission to build bungalows. He did not build bungalows. His building houses stay under the community for retrospective planning permission, the houses. I think it was very, it's very difficult for me to approve this in this case because of the way the builder has acted, got this farm on the build and now community permission. Also thinking sets precedent of other actions and buildings of this type in the area. I think that is a dangerous precedent as well. I I understand fully councillor Pearson and his view on that. That is, I see that as optional. But I also feel the same as the moment I'm finding it difficult to prove this.
Thank you very much. Councillor Westwood. Okay. My contribution. This is a very difficult application. We always find retrospective applications very difficult. However, the fact that it is a retrospective application is not a planning consideration. It's a moral consideration. And as local representatives who, you know, can consider the feelings of local residents very strongly, that it is so frustrating that we as members of the planning committee cannot take the fact that it is a retrospective application as a reason, a planning reason to refuse this application, I'm sorry to say. We have heard from the officer that if this came forward now as a separate application with these houses in this position, with this overlooking, she would still recommend it for approval. So in terms of planning, we cannot use the fact that it's retrospective as a reason to turn it down. However, we ought to be able to. And I think it's a political decision, and I agree with councillor Grobry that we should be lobbying about it. Because this is an abuse of the planning system. And plan, and the values you come forward to, build what they like, sell what they've got permission for, and then come forward and just expect to walk through with a with a completely different application. Um, without, you know, without, I, we should at the very least be accepting the retro, retrospective applications to have a very large being attached to them, that's a fact, I would say. Um, and so, but it's not a planning reason to turn this down, okay? We have heard that the overlooking is going to be mitigated. The large windows are either, they're going to be opening just at the top. They're going to be obscured at eye level. Um, and and so I, I'm sorry, and much as it it brings a nasty taste into my mouth, I will be happy to support the recommendation. It's also simply because I don't think we've got a planning reason to turn it down. And if we do turn it down, you know what will happen, we'll go straight to the perspective and the experts will say it's fine. So, um, you know, it's a case that we're making this decision, we both have to tie behind our back again. Um, I know that Mr Finch would like to say something from a planning perspective before we make a decision to allow that on scale. Oh, councillor Kelly, we've got a debate contributions to debate?
I'm going to, I'm sorry, I'm just a security foreman.
Thank you. Okay, Mr Finch.
Um, thank you, Chair. Yeah, just to inform your final decision. Um, as the Chair has explained, you cannot allow the fact that this is a retrospective application to affect the way you assess the merits of the application. That is orders and guidance, and no one is prevented from seeking planning permission in retrospect. And the fact that you've done so, notwithstanding the fact that people may consider that not to be the right way to do things, and that is well understood, of course. Um, it's not something that should affect the judgment on the assessment of the merits of the application. So that's the first thing. Second thing, however, is you, you know, the fact that something is retrospective does not necessarily mean that it has to be considered to be acceptable. You still have judgments to make. So the fact that somebody applies to some retrospective, it does not, it doesn't have assurance that that will receive planning, because you still have to assess its merits, whether it is retrospective or not. You're perfectly entitled to assess the planning merits of what you have before you today. And that will include the impact, the area and also the impact and relationship with neighbouring properties, which you discussed at some length and some detail. So to be clear, um, there is a recommendation for you this positive. There was a suggestion maybe to revise a condition uh with regards to the rear ventilation first of all, clearly. But, um, as I say, you still have an assessment and judgment to make against planning policy and all the other normal considerations that you are entitled to. So I just didn't want anybody to get the impression that because something is retrospective, that you are almost duty bound to accept it. But you should only refuse it if you've got solid planning reasons to turn it down. And that's where the judgment comes in, and obviously we can assist on that if it need be. But just hopefully that is useful to you before you decide what decision to make. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Finch. Um, the amendment to condition eight. If we could just read like fourteen of those. So I'm presenting that we add in the requirement that the windows in plots A and C that have, that are half obscured glaze, should only be top opening. And so that's subject to bill control, etc. That's that's. Yes, I mean, is that a necessary thing to do?
I think what you also got to do with the conditions obviously is, if you're going to allow them, you need that the people that will occupy those new rooms have got to have themselves, you know, reasonable level of meaning to, which goes back to whether you accept or whether you don't accept the relationships to neighbours, what you can do is, for example, just remove that window, because that's in there. So I think you've got a balance, but I think all I'm saying was I think we just simply need to check whether there is any period of control requirement or an emergency need to escape. That may not be necessary. I think there are reprints actually in those rules, in the plans. But, um, so that may, um, that may do that to issue. So really, you just need to decide about amendment to condition on those. I think it's just that the elevations that face the rear is to the north, that would affect the ones within the site. I don't think so much. I think that's right, Mr Watson. But yeah, so I think that's helpful.
Some, some in the world.
I think both of them are required to be partially obscured glaze at the end of the roof. That's why I checked. Thank you.
I thought we agreed that it was mainly the door to spirit of the sun.
Uh, I do believe that fully obscured is unnecessary and would um impact on the immediate of the new residents. So, um, I think hard obscured is reasonable at any time. Councillor Westwood?
I just can't understand how hard obscured would be.
Because you can't see out of the top because it's so high.
Uh, because I'm not trying to give you both pictures, or, but if it's not what we decide, then it would be obscured. Or, I think, hard.
Okay, okay, I'm happy to take advice from members. Uh, you're all happy with fully obscured glass windows at the gateways, yes?
Yes.
Okay, so fully obscured, please, and that's in condition eight, and it's top opening. Okay. To the immediate of the new residents. And we're going to strengthen the boundary. Now, I think, I think we just. We we love you to stop in the impact of the new parlors. Okay, this may well not affect your votes, but is that, is that okay? So we'll, we'll, we'll try and on the stupid wording of that.
On the addition to reflect the interior base in just top opening, only of those rear, of those gate windows.
Okay, right. Okay, so there's no more contributions to debates. Um, I would like to take a vote now. What would go is, the recommendation is that we should approve this application with the inclusion of those amended conditions, beating up the landscaping and the condition eight about the obscured glass. So can I see all those in favour of this application, please? Are those against? One, two. Any standards?
I'll take, I'll take this, please.
Okay, this application has been approved. Um, I believe, three, two, two, five, three, four, two against, two. Three favour, two against, two assentures. So this application is approved with those changes to the conditions. Thank you very much, everybody. Much appreciated, and thank you for your time.